Live streaming on Facebook and recording.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman Mangiafico to please lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you, everybody. I'll now ask the clerk to please read the call of the meeting.
The Chief of Police of the City of Middletown, greetings. By authority of the State of Connecticut, you are hereby commanded to summon and notify Eugene P. Nosera, Megan R. Carta, Jeanette Blackwell, Vincent J. Lefredo, Darnell Ford, Edward McKeon, Grady L. Faulkner Jr., Philip J. Fasina, Anthony Estenaro Sr., Edward Ford Jr., Linda Salafia, Anthony Mangiafico, members of the Common Council of the City of Middletown, to attend the special meeting of said Common Council for the purpose of A, proposed approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Middletown and Local 466, and B, proposed approval of applications to receive a portion of the city's American Rescue Plan, ARPA, funding. Said meeting shall be a hybrid meeting to be held in the council chamber of a municipal building in said city, and remotely via WebEx at join a meeting, event 2336-834-3314, on Thursday, June 23, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Hereof they will not make due service and return to the clerk of said city three hours prior to the time of fixed meeting. City of Middletown, June 14, 2022, attested by Honorable Benjamin D. Florsheim, Mayor. City of Middletown, June 21, 2022, I hereby certify have delivered an attested copy of the foregoing order and attached agenda of the Common Council meeting to each and every council member named above via electronic mail, attested by Eric Costa, Chief of Police.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I will declare the call a legal call and the meeting a legal meeting. And we are here, as you heard this evening, for a special meeting for the consideration of the 466 contract and for the approval of ARPA task force items. But we do have a public hearing, as always, so any members of the public wishing to speak may do so at this time, either virtually or here in the chamber. And we just ask that your comments be kept germane to those items on the agenda, that you state your name and your address at the beginning, and that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less. And we do not currently have members of the public in the chamber, but we do have a hand raised on WebEx, so we will recognize Jen Hobart first.
Hi, Linda. Can they hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Jen.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, council members. Jen Hobart, President, Local 466, 1807 Manchester Road in Glastonbury. I just wanted to take a minute of your time to tell you that this was a difficult task to do, splitting the union into two separate entities. However, we did successfully negotiate a contract. Everything went very well. It was a pleasure working with the city and their negotiating team. I think everything, all said and done, we're very happy with the contract, as is the city. And I wanted to take this time to thank them. Cory, it's always a pleasure working with her. Mayor, always a pleasure working with you as well. And we just wanted to thank you and hope everyone supports the contract because we're very happy with it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have another hand raised from Brooke Carta.
Hi. Good evening. Brooke Carta, 905 Millbrook Road, Middletown. I am the Vice President of Local 466. I am the Acting President of the soon-to-be Local 1467. And I'm just speaking tonight, asking for your support and voting in favor of our tentative agreements. And to echo what Jen was saying, this was, you know, not an easy task, but we have successfully negotiated our contracts, and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for those remarks. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none in the chamber and none on WebEx, we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much to everybody for those comments, and we will move on now to resolutions and ordinances. I will recognize first Councilwoman Lefredo for item 4A.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving and ratifying and adopting the tentative agreement TA between the City of Middletown, Connecticut, and Local 466, Council Number 4, AFSMI, AFL-CIO, including all associated costs, covering the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025, that in accordance with the City of Middletown Charter and Agreement by Local 466, the city and the Board of Education, BOE, the Common Council approves, ratifies, adopts, including all associated costs, the wages set forth in the TA for the Board of Ed, Local 1467, as well as the insurance and benefits provisions as provided, and that the mayor of the City of Middletown is hereby authorized to sign the Local 466 agreement on behalf of the City of Middletown. I so move, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Faulkner. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for clarification, for the record, maybe if it could be addressed by the negotiator, Cory Wizneski, could she come forward at this time, Your Honor?
Yes, thank you, Cory.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for your efforts in bringing about the negotiation of this unique contractual relationship we have based on the action taken by the voters in adopting a new charter providing for these provisions. Just for clarification, I serve on the pension board, one of the councilmanic representatives, and Local 1467 will retain its pension rights under the current arrangement. Now, my question has to deal with, will there be, like, in police, there's a separate pension obligation funded through the city and through, of course, the members of the police department, the staff, and so forth. Will there be then, for the new Local 1467, will they then disaggregate? Or are they just going to stay with, because I'm just sort of confused here. They're going to stay with the 466? I'm just, if you could clarify that.
Sure. So, for the record, Cory Wizneski, Deputy General Counsel. So, as you all know, the charter passed in November of 2021, and one of the main goals of this negotiation was to implement that change. What we did after the charter was ratified by our electorate is meet with Local 466, State Labor Board, to figure out how we're going to move forward. What they have done is we have Local 466, which is going to be made up of, going forward as of July 1, going to be made up of true city employees who work here over on the city side, and there's going to be Local 1467 who works at the Board of Education. As you all know, all of what were city employees working at the Board of Education, the non-certifieds, are going to be Board of Ed employees come July 1, and they are going to be covered under the 1467. With respect to your question for pension, our charter made clear that non-certified employees working at the Board of Education after June 30, who are eligible to receive a pension, will be considered city employees for pension purposes and continue to be part of our city's pension plan. And if you look at the pension plan, you look at the definition of who's covered, they're still covered, we don't even need to change the pension plan, I did look at that. And so, we are all set with respect to that. And the way that this language was authored is similar to the Russell Library. So, Russell Library are Russell Library employees, but for pension purposes, they're actually city employees. So, it's a similar setup. That's why I use this language in the charter. It's something that we've already done. And so, going forward, they're going to continue to get the pension benefits that they're entitled to, assuming that they had that prior to June, you know, the July 1 date.
So, those particular, going forward, dealing with their pension rights and benefits, will have to be reproved by the city council in the future?
Yes. So, part of the charter also specified that the negotiation of general benefits of non-certified after this June 30 date are going to be handled by the superintendent or his or her designee, and ratified by the Board of Education, except that insurance and pension benefits are going to be negotiated by the city across both bargaining units and will have to be ratified by the Common Council, which is why I included in your packet a summary of what we did with respect to 1467 for pension and insurance. And one thing that I should note is that it's not required under our charter for me as the negotiator for the city to negotiate wages on behalf of 1467, but for purposes of ease of transition and transparency, all relevant parties decided that the city was going to negotiate those benefits across those bargaining units this time. So, you know, we'll see what happens in the future. It's not required under the charter, but everyone did agree that I would negotiate with the 1467 and 466. We all sat at the same table, talked about wages, pension, and insurance at the same time. So, that's all before you tonight. The calculation that Carl provided to you also includes the wages for the Board of Ed employees, so that number incorporates both the city side and the Board of Education side. And that's something that you are all voting on tonight.
Okay, let me, so I did have an opportunity to have a brief discussion with you going forward after this particular contract, the next subsequent contract that will be negotiated. The employees under, so 14, the new number will be 1467, they will negotiate with the Board of Ed their wages?
They will, unless there's some kind of agreement between all parties that I would do that again. And the reason being is really, the determination of employer is wages, hours of work, and that's specifically set forth in our charter, that that's really the role of the Board of Education, unless all parties come together and decide otherwise. Yep.
So, my concern is, since, and I understand that those, that wage negotiations is not subject to approval by the city council?
That's true. Going forward, it's not. And it's specified in the charter that was approved by this body as well as the City of Middletown.
So, hypothetically, going forward, the Board of Ed could negotiate a salary for their employees in 1467 that is clearly different from the salary negotiated for the 466 employees. Those salaries in turn then would help to calculate and determine future pension benefits. And once that is done possibly, and if there's separate negotiations, which clearly are called for in separate salaries, potentially then the pension benefit will not be similar. It will actually be potentially different going forward. I just wanted, as a hypothetical, potentially if that would exist, would that require then, to then disaggregate out and deal with those pension benefits differently, since they're not going to be the same in the future, potentially?
I mean, I think that's something that we'll have to deal with in the future. I mean, there could be new jobs.
This time around, where everything is the same.
Everything is the same.
So, just prospectively, in the future, that may be a possibility.
It may be a possibility. Yep.
I have one other follow-up, which is the transfer rights or possibility that the 1467 employees have. They have the opportunity to apply for vacancies
Right.
on the city side under 466 going forward.
Right.
Do 466 have the same opportunity to apply for openings on their side?
Sorry, my understanding is that there was similar language incorporated in both contracts. So, there's the opportunity to apply on both sides. It's not guaranteed that you would get a job, but it is an opportunity for current employees to do that. Yep.
Thank you for your response and for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll continue discussion with Cory, our Deputy General Counsel, Wizneski. We'll go next to Councilwoman Blackwell, followed by Councilwoman Nosera.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Attorney Wizneski, and I too want to just acknowledge your efforts and say thank you for advocating on behalf of the city. I have a question, and we talked about it earlier today, the number of employees in 1467 and 466. Do you have that information now?
So, I have the exact amount for 1467, which is 161. I do not have the exact amount here on our side, but it's about 350 employees. And then, you, one of the other questions you have, do you want me to answer that?
Sure. You want to state the question and then?
Yes. So, one of the other questions that you posed to me before is, did each of the bargaining units ratify their agreements? And that is, yes, they did. So, 1467, those employees approved their contract. It also went to the Board of Education. I think it was last Thursday. It's already been ratified by the Board of Education. And then, Local 466, those present in voting, it was unanimous. So, yes, it was approved by all relevant parties. This is the last stop.
Excellent. And then I want to make a comment that we, another area that we discussed in its section, so it's Article 9, wages, Section 8. I just want to make a statement about the labor management review process. I don't think I've been quiet about my displeasure of the process, and I think we had a really fruitful conversation about it, and it is my understanding that the mayor, as the chief negotiator for the city, this would be language that, or process rather, that the mayor would negotiate. And so, I do want to make a public appeal about this process, because I do think it's antiquated. I think that it's biased in many respects, and I'm hoping during the next three years of this contract, that this is a process that we can look to revisit, look to examine. And so, I want to just sort of publicly say, and make an appeal to you, Your Honor, that this is a process that I do think we need to spend some time evaluating. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll go next to Councilwoman Nosera, and I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for those comments as we continue to move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Cory, first, let me thank you and General Counsel, because this is a long process, and we heard from our presidents of our unions, a similar thank you. And we appreciate that spirit of cooperation that occurred in this process. It's very important. My questions are simple. In terms of the health benefits and wages gained in this contract, how do they compare to the Derg out there or the general area? I don't know how you rate the comparison.
So, I did include in the executive summary a comparison of wages, and I get that comparison from Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. We get these monthly updates. The average negotiated is around 2.3 over these three years. So, we're a little bit higher, but what you have to understand also is that inflation right now is at 8.6%. I got some, it says the last CPIU index showed inflation increasing another 1% in May, and is 8.6% over the last 12 months. So, sometimes the negotiations don't catch up with these numbers. They might have been negotiated a while ago. We, when we were in the midst of this, we thought that these were fair numbers. And what I would like to say back to your first point is, I do want to thank Local 466, and I want to thank my negotiating team. Everybody worked really hard on this. And, you know, like I think Jen said and Brooke said, it's not easy when you're dealing with transitioning employees to something new. And I think we both came to the table in an open, transparent, and fair way. And so, I really am behind this contract, and I think it's good both for the taxpayer and employees, both on the Board of Ed and city side.
The health benefit plans, how they compare?
So, I didn't take a hard look at that, because we made a decision, the mayor made a decision going in, given that we're still, unfortunately, in this pandemic, that we were not going to change health benefits. So, there, you know, at some point, we were talking about state partnership plan. At some point, you know, we didn't go there just because of the pandemic. I think that we are in the realm of what other municipalities have, but I'd have to do a deeper dive if I were going to be looking at changing insurance in the future.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yeah, I was, just, we'll do Councilman Faulkner, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Lefredo.
Thank you, Your Honor. When you were talking about the comparisons with the average increase, that's the average increase based on each of the city's perspective baseline? Was that comparison based on similar municipalities?
It really is based on the municipalities that report to CCM as to who has negotiated contracts for these years and what they've reported. So, that, I kind of, I gather it from across the state based on what CCM reports to me. So, it can be a smaller town, it can be a bigger town. It really, it's just, all it says is, you know, nine reporting or something. It doesn't tell me exactly who is reporting those numbers.
Yeah, okay. The other thing I was very interested in was the medical, the pharmacy process, because we've been having some issues with the formularies situation. And one of the people involved in it, they call a city pharmacy benefit manager. Who is that? The PPM?
So, I don't know if you're talking about Express Scripts?
Yes.
Yes. Are you asking for a specific name of a person?
Well, mostly, is it a city employee, or is it the insurers?
So, Nancy Conway-Raska is our risk manager. Connie Shaken is our insurance and benefits coordinator, and they deal very closely with all of our health and prescription benefits. And then, we have vendors that we work with. Obviously, we have Cigna for health insurance, we have Express Scripts for prescription. So, we deal with those vendors in responding to issues with employees or retirees. It's important to note that our prescription drug plan did not change in this contract. It stayed consistent with what was negotiated previously in the last contract. So, there should be no changes to prescription benefits this time around.
All right. That sounds interesting. Let's see, the pronoun thing, is that simply because there's, we don't want to say that a specific role is a woman or a man or something like that? Is that?
So, the intent of changing the pronouns, it really is to be more inclusive. I got this request both from the LGBTQ+ Commission as well as the Anti-Racism Commission. Both were looking through our contracts and making sure that we were thinking about all things inclusivity, and I thought it was important to listen and try to get that moving forward for the City of Middletown.
So, is that going to be extended through all of our documents, so to speak?
So, I would have to negotiate that with each unit separately, but the intent is yes, to try to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll go next to Councilwoman Lefredo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for a couple of follow-up questions, some of them were alluded to by my colleagues. So, in terms of comparability factors, I mean, CPI is clearly one of the factors under the collective bargaining statute, and then, of course, comparable communities and so forth. So, just for the record, at this time, or maybe based on prior negotiations, could you list the, at least half a dozen, or five, or six? Who are the comparable, what are the comparable communities that you would look at, or we have looked at historically, when we do comparable analysis of our contracts with other municipalities?
Right. So, the person I usually, the expert on that is Justin Richardson. He's not here tonight, but usually it's like East Hartford, Manchester, I want to say Meriden. Those are ones that come to mind. There are more, and I could provide those if you would like.
Sure. That would be helpful to provide that. And just for the record, since, so as I read the current contract, we're going to maintain the current percentage of requirement for the employees to pay for their premium benefits.
Premium cost share. Yep, for health insurance.
And that's 14%, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
And that will stay in effect until '22, '25?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Slafja?
I have just one comment. And just for the record, I agree with Councilwoman Blackwell that we really need to look at the labor management. I don't believe it's anywhere near what we intended back when we put it into place as being the one and only way to get a job reclassified. So...
Yeah, that's language that predated me working here, and it's always something that we think about and can talk about further. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, I will just add my thanks to the council for your questions and support. Thanks very much to Cory and the whole negotiating team, as well, as you heard earlier from Jen and Brooke, to our partners. This was a smooth process, and we were able to protect, you know, I think the point was made very well by members who asked questions and by Attorney Wizneski, but able to protect taxpayers and also the benefits that is so important, are so important that we provide for these employees. And to Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilwoman Slafja, those comments about labor management, I think, are very well taken. There are a number of process-oriented things that we ought to look at in upcoming contracts, and I hope that there's, you know, opportunity for collaboration on that. So, thank you. Councilman Faulkner, I see your...
Yeah, I apologize. There was one other thing I was kind of thinking about, and that was something about some Janus versus Merck and something
Yep.
where we are, we don't require, we're a municipality that doesn't require employees to be part of a union. Is that what that basically says?
So, what I'm doing as we go through all of our contracts is making sure that we are acknowledging the U.S. Supreme Court case, Janus versus American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. And that decision, which came out in 2018, specified that you can't require as a condition of employment, an employee to be part of a union. And so, now employees have the option of opting out of the union. So, there's language in each of these contracts that pretty much has that. It says it's a condition of employment that you have to be in the union if you step into one of these roles. So, that, in effect, is a legal language. We no longer follow that language. There's different processes that we have set in place if somebody wants to opt out of the union. And so, that all, that all is happening as I go through each and every contract.
Is there something that stands when the unions negotiate their contract? Does whatever they negotiate flow to the people who are not in it?
Yes, they do. So, unions still have an obligation to represent those individuals, even though they opt out. And that really is an issue for the unions in determining how they do that. That's kind of part of their bylaws and how they figure out that process. We just have to know, is the individual in or out, because that's a payroll issue? And then, all of the benefits, those positions are still owned by the union, so to speak, but the individual can opt out. So, yes, they still do get the benefits that they're allotted under the contract, and then it's a union issue as to how they handle it, if there's a disciplinary matter, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, Cory, for those, for all that input and for your leadership on this process. And we'll move now to a vote. All those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining. All right. Matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to, again, to our team and to our great employees and partners in labor. And thank you very much, council, for your support. And I see our finance director as well. So, thank you, thank you to Carl and the finance team, who also had a huge role in this process. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving right along, we'll, we have some ARPA items to discuss. So for item 4B, I will recognize Councilman Gennaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item B, approving that resolution number 86-22, as approved by the common council on June 6, 2022, is amended so that funding for the approved American Rescue Plan application is from, one, the Russell Library, two, the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce, three, the Northern Middlesex YMCA, and four, the combined application from the City of Middletown Recreation and Community Services Department, the Arts and Culture Department, Russell Library. We move from line item 304501000, 5920000000, 50s, 2021000, to line item 304601000, 59200000000, 2021000. Move approval, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor.
And I'd like to invite Attorney Brigg to come up and speak to this as well.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Brigg. And we'll move on to discussion. So any, Councilman Gennaro, floor is yours if you have any questions. Otherwise, we can open it up.
I'd just like to have Attorney, just to give a brief synopsis on that, if you could.
You're asking an attorney to be brief?
Funny. That's good.
I don't bill by the hour anymore, so I actually will be brief. So all this does, it's an accounting issue. So our first tranche of ARPA funding came in. And the appropriations that we made, you know, through the date of this resolution have gone beyond that tranche. So this then switches over to another pot of ARPA money and would do the appropriation from that pot, which is, still has funding within it. That's what it does, with a lot of zeros.
All right, Councilman Lefredo.
Yeah, so just a technical question then. So the current account, you couldn't, we couldn't add money to the current align? To add money, we were not permitted to do that?
I don't know, I mean, to be sort of a finance question. I suspect that we have, there's a couple of funding sources. So there's the, there's the county equivalent funding source, which was plus or minus $8 million. And because we don't have county government in Connecticut, Middletown got its equivalent. And so there's, that's one one. Then the $12 million that is direct aid came in two tranches, one is $6 million and the other is $6 million. So it may well have been divided out in various line items, I don't know. But I'm told by finance this is the best way to do it. And what they tell me, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and likewise. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, thank you. Matter passes unanimously. And I don't know if there will be further questions for Brigg, but maybe stay proximate to the podium. We'll move next to Councilwoman Blackwell for item 4C.
Thank you, Your Honor. 4C, approving the American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act, excuse me, Task Force's recommendation and the following project in the following amount based on the application submitted to the task force. Nora Cupcake Company applicant. Nora Cupcake Company description. Nora Cupcake Company wants to acquire 696-700 Main Street to ensure its continued operations in Middletown and to ensure that the 14 single resident apartments remain secure and affordable. Amount, $500,000. And that the mayor is authorized to prepare and execute any documents necessary to effectuate this American Rescue Plan Act grant funding, subject to approval as to content and form by the Office of the General Counsel. I move approval and ask, please, if Attorney Smith would also speak to, briefly speak to item C, please. 4C, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this would be one of several ARPA applications before the council. The idea is that the Nora Cupcake Company would acquire and then renovate the building they're in right now. And the connection, again, is you've got 12 jobs that'd be created and 14 residents who would be there at the North End and sort of upgrade and, and secure stability housing for those folks. But that's the idea behind it.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions, Councilwoman Blackwell?
I do have a follow-up question, and thank you, Your Honor. In terms of affordable housing, how are we going to, and I know there's some talk about hiring a consultant, and perhaps we'll get to that part of the conversation this evening. But can you elaborate, please, on that particular aspect in terms of the affordable housing? How will ensure that will occur?
So affordable housing generally is separate and apart from ARPA. So ARPA is this sort of broad umbrella. And affordable housing is one of, one of many things that folks can consider in seeking that funding. But it is not part and parcel to ARPA. The consultant question is a good one. It's one that Task Force talked about yesterday. And so here's what I've said all along, sort of my, my sense on these projects, my opinion on whether they're eligible or not, is just that. It's my opinion. Ultimately, the feds can be the ones to determine if they're eligible or not. So the talk of the task force and the decision sort of to proceed with the task force is to look at retaining a consultant to actually be able to advise the city on eligibility, to help with grant and sub-grant agreements, to help with auditing, to help with reporting, to help with all the things that will require us to go through in order to get the ARPA funding passed through. Now, keep in mind, two things. One is, I think it's good, and the task force thinks it's good, to have someone with their own errors and omissions policy to be, you know, like a professional accountant, a buffer between the city and a potential liability. So you want to rely on an expert to do that. Two is, there's just an awful lot, sort of a massive amount of grant administration that's now come up. Because what's happened is, we went from potential direct funding, a project, a city project, to awarding grants and sub-grants. And that's a very different animal than just administering, you know, direct funding from the city. And to that end, keep in mind that if something goes south with a grantee or a sub-grantee, they're not the ones on the hook, it's the city. The liability flows from the feds to the city, and we're the ones on the hook. So again, that goes back to number one, which is all the more reason the task force thinks it's a good idea to look at consultants. So I'm preparing right now an RFP that would go out to look for a consultant. And I've talked to my colleagues in the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys, the finance department as well has reached out to their colleagues. And so there is, there's a number of firms and folks that do this and do it well. So we're seeking guidance from them. Very early stages, I'm still, I've drafted, I think, the first page of the RFP at this point. So that's, that's up to the minute where we are on that. Not brief, I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. We'll go next to Councilman Faulkner, followed by Councilman Lefredo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was, my question was more about the funds itself. What is it being spent on? Is it acquisition of the building, or is it renovations of the building, or what?
Yeah, it is, it's both. Let me see, if the application is at the back of the resolution, so it's item 4C. And they have a breakdown, I believe, of what they're looking to do. Yeah, thanks, thanks, council member.
Is it the last page?
Yeah. And so, yeah, so the, there'd be a $60,000 deposit towards purchase price. It's already been paid. They'd be doing $100,000 of their own savings applied at the closing. $375,000 of a mortgage to scrub their property. And then the ARPA funding would go into that. So $400,000 of ARPA funding plus $360,000 of Nora funding is $760,000. And that's the, the total land and associated costs that they're looking at. So they're estimating 100 grand for equipment costs, 100 grand for supplies and materials costs. And, and that's how they get to the total ask.
Okay. Yeah, I see that now, okay. So it's a partial. Because the $400,000, oh, that's the request. So the $360,000 is for the land and associated costs?
Just to clarify, it's a $500,000 ask. The 400 grand, there would be.
Oh, yeah, that's what they're asking for, is the 400, so the $400,000.
500, they're looking for 500. So they're looking for $100,000, $400,000, it looks like in.
I, I know.
Okay, apologies, okay.
I'm just separating, because the other $100,000 is like supplies and materials.
Right.
But I was just looking at the, the land or the property, whether that, that was more of capital spending in terms of ownership. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We'll go next to Councilman Lefredo, followed by Councilman Nosera. And then we also have Councilman McKeon with a question on WebEx.
Thank you. Just looking over the application. In the application, it's indicated clearly the number of the beneficiaries. And I guess, I don't know, page number, I guess, maybe. But it's under the beneficiaries, number of a detailed breakdown, expected current jobs being held and expected expansion for additional employment. And then specifically indicating the residencies, the number of households. I assume these are current, they are, it's meant they're current occupantly, current occupants of the apartments associated with the building. Do we know that this transaction is contingent upon receiving this money? Or what is the, you know, do we, did they provide any information to say, listen, the property that I plan to, that I'm asking to purchase with X, Y, with this money in part, I have an agreement with the current owners? Or is, do they have to document that, that what they're, what we're agreeing to is actually something that can be accomplished?
So my, my recollection is that the acquisition is not contingent upon receiving ARPA funding, that they're, you know, putting together a financing package, you know, trying to do that on their own as well. But that, you know, saying to the, you know, the financing folks, it's okay, I've got a resolution from council. That's not part of the, the financing package.
So I guess, get more directly to, I guess, clarifying. So they do have a potential agreement with the current owner to purchase the property that is being presented before us this evening?
That's my understanding.
And this, to what degree are the terms that are contained in this application and that is being presented to the council and, of course, was presented to the review committee and then brought before us this evening? How binding are these terms?
It's a great question, and that goes back to the consulting. So what will happen, what needs to happen, is there needs to be a sub-grantee agreement drafted and entered into. And that agreement is going to have to say, pursuant to the terms of the authorization, you are going to have to do X, Y, and Z. And if you don't, it'll be clawed back and it'll go back to the city. And that's, I've got examples of what other cities have done. It's something I've started to work on. But again, that's the kind of thing that someone, a consultant, would be, would be well-served to be able to help us with.
My last question is that this particular venture of maintaining existing apartments and expanding an existing building in an existing location in the North End, this is all related together. This is not somebody buying a separate new venture that's never been done. This is something that substantially has been in effect and will continue in effect and be able to be expanded upon. And this is tax, at the end of the day, this will be on the tax rolls, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We'll go next to Councilman Nosera, followed by Councilman McKeon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to take this opportunity to thank our attorney, Brig Smith, and the full committee and the working group that has been working so conscientiously in the past two months or more on this process. And I, I want to make it clear that the consultant was not an afterthought. It was, you know, clearly presented way at the beginning that as we went through the applications, we were going to, we reached that point where we absolutely, as many other communities, have hired the expertise to, for grant administration, which is extremely important. And, and to make certain that applicants are within the guidelines of ARPA, ARPA funding. It was unanimous to, to move in this direction. I don't feel that it's going to slow down the process greatly. It will a little for some of the applicants who might think that we're, they're ready to start. But, you know, we're very excited about the projects that are bringing, are coming forward. They're in tremendous benefit to the community. And we will, they will unfold soon. So again, thank you, because this has been a tremendous amount of work. And the conscientiousness of the group has been phenomenal.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. We'll go next to Councilman McKeon, followed by Councilwoman Slavia. And then we'll go to Councilwoman Blackwell after that.
Thanks, Your Honor. Brigg, I just have a couple of questions.
Yep.
One is, I think you said, I just want a clarification, that it's not the city making the determination. It's the federal government who's making the determination if these projects are eligible. Is there a step now that has to, we have to go through, where it has to go back to the federal government for them to give approval before we can?
No, no, regret, and I wish there were. So it is, it's very much, you put in a quarterly report. You say, here's the projects that we're doing, here's what we're spending it on. And then you, you do your best. If there's an issue, you find out about it afterwards, and they look at it, and then there'd be potential audit. So I wish we had permission going up front. I hope we don't need forgiveness at the back.
Okay, and that, that was another question I had. It's, you've been in the meetings with the, the people who are thinking about this program. Is there, for a better, want of a better word, punishment? If we give money to an organization and for whatever reason they're not able to, to do it? I understand you said we would claw back the money.
Right.
Is there, is there any, I mean, are we putting people in danger by accepting a loan, or not a loan, a grant?
Yeah, I guess I would equate it to, and, and the applications that you're reviewing as part of this, it's sort of the CDBG paradigm. So it's a very similar idea, it's very similar reporting, and similar, you know, risks, I suppose. You know, if you're taking the money, you've got to be aware of them. And the grantee, sub-grantee agreement's going to spell that out.
Okay. In terms of the kinds of organizations that are considered, I know we put the word out and we have applications, we have more applications, that if they were fulfilled, then we have money to fulfill. So that's all good to note. Have we cast the net wide enough? And are the restrictions so great that someone who has a good idea, but might not have a lot of capital, but needs a capital, is not eligible? In terms of budgeting and finance, what does the committee look at?
Sure. So we put, I think, as wide a net out as we could think to do. So we did a press release, we have our website. There was an application deadline of June 13 at 4:00 p.m. So everything that's come in is in, and that's all that's going to come in. And I prepared a spreadsheet for everybody to see what all of the universe now looks like. So at least that's a known quantity, it hadn't been for a while. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I'm listening.
Okay. In terms of, you know, how expansive it can be, what kinds of uses there can be, between when the act was first promulgated and when the guidelines and regulations were first being discussed in a preliminary context, the hue and cry came up saying, wait a second, this is a lot of money, but we can't spend it. The restrictions were so limited. So we knew we could do water and sewer, which, you know, we've already done some of, we can do broadband. But everything else was sort of very difficult to figure out. So the feds came back, Treasury's final guidelines, final regulations say, you know, broadly speaking, here's what you can do. And so it's loosened up the, you know, the purse strings a little bit in what we can do. So we can do things like, in my estimation, do like the Nora Cupcake Company, do some of the other projects that you're going to see before you tonight and on a going-forward basis. But I don't know what to say beyond, it's, it's as flexible as, as it's. flexible as, uh, as it's going to be, and the feds heard about the flexibility limitations, and at least tried to adjust a little bit.
Great, then one final question, isn't it something that Councilman Nocera referred to, and I'm just wondering if hiring a consultant is going to hold up getting dollars in the hands of, of people who would like to get going on whatever they're applying for, in other words, how much, what, what is the, the lag time between us approving these dollars, and them getting in, it, it into the hands of the people who need it?
So the consultant would not be involved in the selection process, aside from just double-checking the math that in fact this is an eligible use, um, the task force is making its recommendations, council's then appropriating, and, uh, the mayor's then expending, uh, as the projects come up, uh, the limiting factor is going to be the grantee, sub-grantee agreement, okay, so the actual limiting factor, unless it's a city project, getting the money in people's hands, is getting a contract in place, and, and so that's the kind of thing for which I need, you know, I think help, and I need a consultant to make sure that we're doing this properly as well. I'm looking to do a very tight turnaround on RFP, so I'm looking to have, um, the process done, and a report made back to the task force, uh, as soon as its next meeting in a month, uh, because I do think time is of the essence.
Okay, I was going to say the same thing, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you the same way. Thanks.
All right, great, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, we'll go next to Councilman Slavia.
I just have a quick question, we've got your spreadsheet, and we also have the CBDG spreadsheet, is that just for informational purposes only, for people who may have already received money?
Not sure I know which CDBG spreadsheet you mean. So the, I don't actually have the last page with me, but just the first page, um, but yeah, if you don't mind, Your Honor, may I approach the bench?
That might have been an accidental inclusion, I think it was just a.
Oh, okay.
Move along, nothing to see here. It was, you know, it was, uh, it was, uh, it's there in error, so again, the, the paradigm that we have adopted is CDBG, so the categories you're going to see, the grading, that sort of thing, it's CDBG, and, and there's the proof, sorry.
That, that works, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, Councilman Blackwell, was that your question as well, or?
No, no, it wasn't, Your Honor.
Over to you.
Thank you, but I appreciate, uh, the question. Uh, my question, uh, I have two questions, first one is connected to the consultant, uh, and perhaps you don't have the answer to this question this evening, um, who do you envision the, the consultant reporting to? Will the consultant report to you?
I think, yeah, it would, it would, uh, report to me, and then to the task force, ultimately to the mayor, um, and then council with the appropriation process as well, but yeah, in terms of day-to-day direction, yeah.
Okay, and, uh, thank you, uh, the spreadsheet, I'm looking for the denials, the ones that were submitted and denied.
Yes.
Where, where is?
So you will.
Orient me to the spreadsheet, please.
Sure, the second last column says task force recommended funding. And you will see the task force, if they've recommended funding, the, the amount, where there's a dash, that's a zero, they have not recommended funding it, so for instance, there was a wildlife refuge, uh, uh, project that was conceived, and the task force didn't find, uh, support for it, um, and same for one of the projects, uh, the 206, Inc. project that had been proposed, the task force, uh, did not recommend supporting it, and so you'll see zero for the recommended funding there, or a dash.
And how do we make the distinction of the ones that are currently pending? Are they attached to this list as well, and haven't gone through the process?
So I've tried to indicate, so the ones that list, uh, under status, application received, are the ones that have yet to be queued up for presentations, processes, applications come in, they go out to the task force and they come in, we try to schedule, we can do about four presentations per meeting, folks present, the working group, you know, looks at them, makes recommendations, comes back to task force, shares the recommendations, and the task force then considers and votes on them, and then they pass on the recommendation to you.
Excellent, uh, and I appreciate Attorney Smith, you sharing this, this list, um, with the entire, uh, body, as I look over the list, I'm trying to assess if they are grassroots organizations, how many grassroots organizations in fact are applying for the, the, um, the grant.
Sure.
Um, and if you could just do the math, what's the balance?
Oh, you're going to make me do math on television again?
I just want to make sure my interpretation of the numbers is, is accurate.
Okay, uh, so, uh, as it now stands, again, the, the federal allocation is about $21 million, council has already appropriated $7.8 million, and that's the stuff that you're going to see in the top items, uh, one through nine, okay? The projects that are before you tonight, if you appropriated the full amount that the task force is recommending, that would be two point, about $2.7 million, so you take that, and add it to 7.8, that you've already appropriated, that's about $10.5 million of the 21 that would have been appropriated, leaving about 10.5 million, 10.4 million to go.
So we have almost half left to go still.
What did I say about lawyers being brief?
I, I, I appreciate that.
You're right.
I think it's, I think it's important for us to all have the actual.
I agree.
Dollar amount, so I appreciate seeing it in writing, thank you, Attorney Smith.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor of approval of item 4C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All abstaining, all right, thank you, matter passes unanimously, and we'll move on to, um, item 4D, I'll recognize, uh, Councilman Nocera for that motion.
Thank you, Your Honor, approving that the American Rescue Plan Act Task Force Recommendation and the following project, in the following amount based on the applicant submitted to the task force, cross-street training and academic center applicant, cross-street training and academic se- center description, this has three elements, I use the community health workers' emergency relief fund for Middle, uh, Middletown Church Community members, and the grant income program. All programs will focus on black, indigenous, and people of color BIPOC individuals, and are, uh, designed to advance health equity through the connection to health and well-being services, and prioritizing economic mobility. The amount is $620,809, and that the mayor is authorized to prepare and execute any documents necessary to effectuate this American Rescue Act, uh, grant funding, subject to approval as to the content and form by the Office of General Counsel. I enthusiastically move to support this, um, applicant, and would like to, uh, speak to it briefly.
Great, thank you very much, is there a second?
Ducking, Your Honor.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Nocera, go ahead.
Uh, this, uh, obviously, if you see the numbers, uh, the rubric, uh, this was a highly supported doc, uh, proposal, and, um, we feel it's very important to, uh, to, uh, support this as a community and a, a city, uh, sponsor of this program, so I'd like to, to invite, uh, Attorney Smith to come up for a second, just to briefly, um, give us an overview. Thank you, Brick.
Sure, so again, uh, as you men, as you mentioned, Councilmember, there were three elements to the proposal, um, the first is a, um, emergent, well, first is community health worker program, and that would be, um, looking towards, uh, on average, um, 25 families per year, another individual community member, a total of 25 per year, um, over a two-year period, 175 families or individuals, uh, per year, and the community health worker program, if you look in your packet, there's a good description of it in the PowerPoint that they give, and they were much more eloquent in presenting than I will be right now, but bear with me. So, uh, they address the community health worker proposal this way, there's a need, they say, because COVID continues to have a disproportionate impact on BIPOC individuals and communities, and sustained recovery is needed for the foreseeable future, solution, they say, is having two community health workers, who'd be trusted members of that community, and who'd be able to assist community members in navigating health and social services, finding culturally appropriate care, and empowering them to have a voice in their care, so that was, that's sort of one part of the proposal. A second part of the proposal is, um, uh, emergency relief, uh, funding, that would be, um, tied to, uh, 10 churches, uh, per year, with over 3,000, uh, individuals who benefit, uh, from it, and the cost of that would be $200,000. Now, there was a third element that we talked about, and it would be individual aid to community members, and the task force had some questions about that, and the questions really were trying to track through and make sure, again, because of the auditing requirements, that, uh, money that went from the city, to the grantee, to an individual sub-grantee, were properly tracked, and, and they didn't know exactly how that would work, so, uh, we're following up with Reverend Anderson, uh, on that, getting answers to those questions, so I, just to make the council aware, that there is a likelihood that there would be a supplemental request for the additional $600,000 in this proposal, but as to the, uh, the first two pieces, the task force was unanimous, uh, in support, uh, and the third piece, again, we're, we're going to follow up on.
All right, thank you, Brick.
Thank you, Brick.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Nocera, we'll go next to Councilman Lefredo.
Thank you, Your Honor. So just a few follow-up questions, because the proposal that we have before us is for two years.
Yes.
So, is the second year yet to be determined, or?
No, there is, um, a budget, it's, it's not numbered, but there's a budget in here that breaks down year one and year two.
Yes.
So the $200,000 for emergency relief would be 100,000 in year one, 100,000 in year two.
Right, because the overall proposal is for 1,220,809.
Correct.
But we're not funding that.
No, the proposal, so the council, the task force recommendation to the council would be the $620,000, not the entire 1.2 million.
So, because as I look at what year one, they're asking for 615,066, but, so they're going to get six, an extra few dollars more, if they're going to 620?
So what, what would happen is, if council accepts the recommendation of the task force, and doesn't, you know, add another $600,000, then the direct cost grant income program, that line would disappear, so $300,000 in year one, and $300,000 in year two, totaling $600,000, that would not be a part of it anymore.
So, because just mentioned, that that's where I'm getting confused, because I look at the, the, uh, detailed budget presented, um, because they have the 10 Middletown churches, each one of them getting $10,000 per church, that's 100,000, and then grant income program for 25 families, a thousand dollars a month, that's the 300,000 for a total of, out of the grant, 405,000 would be expended for those two items, am I, am I correct?
So the, the better way to divide it up is to look at the direct grant as the $300,000 in year one, and $300,000 in year two.
Oh.
So if, there is a, um, permission to approach the bench, Your Honor?
Yes, okay, yes, I've got that, yeah, okay.
Different kind of, Your Honor, different kind of bench, but old habits, study hard.
Yeah, it's just, you know, exchange one dais for another.
So, are they going to get money for both years, but split half, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so, exactly so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, the money that they will receive in this proposal this evening, will be money that they will have to be, they can expend, they will be able to expend it over a two-year period.
Correct.
And therefore they'll, they will make necessary adjustments, uh, to meet what they're hoping to achieve.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, any further discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all abstaining, all right, thank you, matter passes unanimously, and we'll go next to, uh, Councilman Mangiafico for item 4E.
Thank you, Your Honor, approving the American Rescue Plan Act Task Force Recommendation and approve the following project in the following amount based on the application submitted to the task force, restaurant and ice cream on South Main Street, applicant JDS Holdings LLC, description, this project would retrofit 562 South Main Street into a small restaurant, including demolition of the existing building, remediation of all environmental issues, and construction of a restaurant that will serve food and ice cream. The project would create 55 jobs, including 30 full-time positions in a low-income area, total amount, $600,000, and that the mayor is authorized to prepare and execute any documents necessary to effectuate this American Rescue Plan Act grant funding, subject to approval, as to content and form by the Office of General Counsel, I move approval.
Thank you very much, uh, seconded by Councilman Slavia, I think that was, uh, thank you, uh, and we'll move on to any discussion.
Uh, Your Honor, can I have, uh, Council, uh, Brick Smith, once again, briefly, in quotes, uh, describe this application to the council?
Sure, so this would be a, um, tear-down and rebuild of, uh, building on South Main Street, and it would be a restaurant and ice cream, uh, place, uh, the proposal would create 55 jobs, 30 full-time, 25 part-time, and provide a presence and, uh, economic, uh, activity in a community that's identified as 40% low-income, so that's the idea, and that's the ask, is, uh, $600,000.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Brick, uh, we'll go first to Councilman Lefredo, followed by Councilman Nocera.
Thank you, Your Honor, so, I've, I'm familiar with this property, I think, because I pass by it frequently, it used, used to be the Midstate Tractor property, it was then sold, uh, you know, so, we're not talking an existing business that was operating that, for whatever, had financial difficulties during pandemic, and in order for them to continue working and so forth, uh, that's not where this money is going, as I understand it.
Correct.
As I understand it, uh, so the building was, the property was put up for sale and sold, and then I was familiar with the looking, you know, at one point, uh, there was an article in the, uh, Middletown Press in August of, uh, 2021, could Dairy Queen open in Middletown? Few seem opposed, so, uh, it was purchased, and then the application was going to planning and zoning, and, because it, I believe, so anyways, it's described in a Middletown Press article, so my question has to deal with, so this is from someone who serves as a member of the city's Economic Development Committee, um, where, uh, a developer comes to town and looks for financial assistance to open up a new business, and, uh, proceed from there and seeks funding in some fashion, could be an abatement, or a variety, you know, whatever else we could potentially provide, so, in terms of, because this is sort of a unique among the applications that in other applications in prior meetings that we've considered, organizations that we've granted ARPA money to, and to businesses and so forth, in terms of downtown development and so forth, um, this one's sort of unique from, starting from ground up, so, did we advertise to the public that this propo- a proposal, an economic development proposal, starting from scratch, uh, at least that's my, I'm seeking for myself, in my assessment of this, nothing wrong with somebody wanting to, uh, open up a new business and so forth, but that ARPA money would be considered or available, uh, for such a venture, uh, I'm just, it's just by the role of the, how, so that's my question, was that?
So, so again, all, all, the, the call. So, so again, all, the the call was made, press release was given, website was set up, and if interested, come and apply. There were no guidelines beyond that, no suggestions beyond that. And in terms of, you know, my view of this, it is, in my view, eligible for ARPA funding. The wisdom, advices, and virtues of proceeding with it is a policy question, but legally, I don't, I don't see an issue with proceeding with it.
So per se, because most of us were thinking of terms of ARPA money being used to benefit folks who had suffered or difficulties regarding the unfortunate situation with COVID, being put out of business, loss of jobs, and a variety of other things, this, you would agree, is a new, on the face of it, it seems to me, that, I mean, it's clearly written there, this is a new economic development proposal. This building doesn't currently exist, the building would be torn down, and a new facility, new restaurant, providing these services would be provided, employment, so forth and so on, but this would be a new economic development, a new venture that we would be providing funding for.
I guess I would say a couple things. So one is, in terms of just nomenclature, economic recovery versus economic development is sort of the preferred term when we're doing federal guidelines and auditing. That's one. Two is, the application itself points out that it would help an existing small business that was financially impacted and cash flow strapped due to delays caused by high material costs and labor shortages due to COVID. That significantly burdened the business by settling with debt and preventing the small business from moving forward within a reasonable timeframe. So the the hook into ARPA is that ARPA is in part designed for economic recovery to small businesses and to disproportionately impacted low-income communities. And so I think that's the basis under the act for which this application would qualify. Again, whether, you know, whether and to what extent counsel wants to support the idea is a policy question, but legally, it's fine.
So but fair to say, though, this is not a recovery proposal, because this proposal is not a currently existing restaurant, an existing venture that was in effect over the past several years. This is some, what was there in place, Midstate Tractor no longer exists, and this is not a proposal to regenerate that particular venture that did exist during the COVID period.
So I'm, I would say it's not necessarily fair to say that, and I would say, too, that's part of why I think it's important to have a consultant. Okay? So my, my read of this is that it constitutes economic recovery in the sense that it was a plan, it was stymied by the pandemic, it made the material costs go up, it made it more difficult to proceed. Okay? And so because it, ARPA in part is to aid small businesses, and because it's in part to aid communities that are economically distressed, that's the, that's the the rubric under which this falls.
And therefore
But again, that's my opinion.
I understand. And there would therefore potentially be other businesses that have experienced the same situation, applying what you just said out there. In terms of, my concern was to what degree the community at large, businesses and the like, who were experienced, as you just articulated, we're well, we're aware that this money that we're expending could be potentially used in the manner as being recommended by this particular proposal.
I don't have the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. I will go next to Councilman Nocera, followed by Councilman Faulkner. I do want to just very briefly say that I think that the, just sort of adding on behalf of the administration to Brig's comments, that the Congress's charge is not recovery for individual small businesses or organizations or or what-have-you grant recipients, it's for recovery of the community as as a whole, and for the states and cities that are benefits of the of the act as a whole. And I think that that's sort of the the way to look at, that's certainly the yardstick in the rubric that the task force has been using to evaluate these projects. So I thought that would be helpful to just add briefly. So Councilman Nocera will go next to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two points, having served on the full committee and the working committee, the presentation made was clear that the, there is, there is some minor soil contamination that the applicant was very interested in, in some relief there. It's not something significant, but it needs to be dealt with, and it's costly to remove soil properly. And the other, the other piece that didn't come out, and this could perhaps be a consultant question, but the applicant was very much interested in instituting a way to honor free and reduced lunch at his business. Is that, do you recall that, Brig?
I do, it's a good point, yep.
Yeah. And, you know, so that this would be perhaps one of the first to try to incorporate that for low-income families and families coming and using the facility. So I don't think it's impossible. I think it happens in other places. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll go next to Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, this, this one is, you know, I was, I was reading through it, I haven't got a chance to read any, all of these, but this one, I wanted to just make sure that the employees will be coming from this area. It looks like that. It says 55 jobs, including 50, 30 full-time positions in a low-income area. So that's a, that's a big plus. And the, and the other one is that they, they have a track record. They've done a couple of other businesses, the mobile stations, you know, the loop things, and that was in their, in their background, so they know how to run, get people in that run businesses in the places. So it's, you know, it looks like a plus for me. $600,000, you could also look at it as environmental, you know, because it was a tractor joint. Now it'd be ice cream. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Blackwell, do you have a question? Or a, or a comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to build on what Councilman Faulkner said about the the jobs and the opportunity, and I think it speaks to the importance of making sure the consultant that we put in place is going to be the one, I believe, that will follow up to ensure the terms and conditions of these agreements, these grants are, are actually effectuated to the letter of the the application, if you will. Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's the hope. That's what we're looking for.
So there is some checks and balances to
That's the hope.
The process.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And and the consultant would also be assisting in getting that written, and would effectuating those agreements that will, that they will then be held to after the, after the approvals. All right, any further discussion? Councilman Lefredo.
Yes, just to, just to follow up on the economic sides of this issue, I just, under the project beneficiaries, a $600,000, 42 full-time employees, $14,285.71. That reflects the wage for the year, or how are we doing this here?
Give me a minute. Yeah, so I think the methodology that they're proposing is they take $600,000 in ARPA funding, you'd be looking at 42 full-time equivalent jobs, so the 30 plus 25, and so you divide 600,000 by 42, you get that amount, that $14,285.71.
Divide 42 into 600,000, you get the
Right, and so that's, that's the methodology. They say that money and those full-time equivalents breaks down to this amount, about 14, 14,000.
Considering the minimum wage, though, that's in the state of Connecticut and the like, in a 30, 40-hour work week, wouldn't you need more than 14,000?
I, again, it's, it's a CDBG formula, so I don't think it's as, probably as specific as that, might be a good way to to do it, but that's not how they did it with CDBG.
Thank you.
Councilman Faulkner.
Are you talking about the the full-time, full-time equivalent on the public benefit standard?
It's, yeah, page four, item number seven.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's not wages, that's the total project, because I, I don't, I don't have the details, but some of this is going to be construction money, right? Yeah, so it's not supposed to be like just income.
It is, yeah, that's a good point. It's not intended to reflect the wages or additional income that individuals would receive. It's intended to reflect, as far as the mayor said, the impact on the community. So that's the way they do it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
One abstention, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Abstention from Councilman Lefredo, and passes unanimously otherwise. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on. Next to item F, I'll recognize Councilwoman Slavia for a motion.
Thank you. I have item F, approving the American Rescue Plan Act Task Force Recommendation and approves the following project in the following amount based on the application submitted to the task force. Middletown Fire Department Quint Apparatus, the applicant is Middletown Fire Department. Description, the purchase of a quint fire apparatus for the Middletown Fire Department that will allow the department to use a single piece of equipment as both a pumper and aerial apparatus. Amount, $1 million. And that the mayor is authorized to prepare and execute any documents necessary to effectuate this American Rescue Plan Act grant funding, subject to approval as to content and form by the Office of the General Counsel. I so move, and I reluctantly ask Attorney Smith to remain at the dais to give us a very brief presentation.
Sure. So again, I can't add too much. I mean, you've already exceeded whatever knowledge I have regarding firefighting, but it sounds like it's a two-for-one.
Poopy.
No, it's a two-for-one. So they, they were seeking 1.2 million, and the task force recommendation is funding 1 million.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Brig, and I will, this, this is indeed, for those who might have been wondering, the same fire apparatus that you heard about from Chief Warren recently during the budget process that they were looking to acquire. So any questions or discussion on this item?
I can use a second.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Gennaro. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? All right, yeah, matter passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And if there's nothing further, I will thank again the task force for all of their many, many hours of work into, that they put into this. Thank you, Brig, and and the rest of our staff for their hard work, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, Your Honor.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are standing in adjournment at 7:26. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to our Sergeant-at-Arms, and thank you, Corporation Counsel Ryan. We will see you next